It is 7:03 PM on January 26, 2022. And we will reconvene the continued public hearing, the application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street, Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021. The subject of tonight's meeting is to discuss and select the environmental peer reviewer and the engineering/site plan peer reviewer, and to also discuss additional environmental and engineering materials that we may need, that we feel we need from the applicant in order to give the peer reviewers sufficient materials to conduct their study. I will be taking input from the public with respect to additional information that they may feel we need from the applicant. We will not be discussing traffic and public safety tonight. That will be on Wednesday, February 9, once we have the final report back from the peer reviewer. And at that point, I will take public comment on the traffic components. So that will be February 9. Okay, so I also have phoned a friend. So I will be calling on Steve Gang, who's the Chair of the Conservation Commission. I asked him to take a look at the peer reviewers and also make suggestions as to what type of other information we might need. So I'll be calling on him at various points. Okay, Board. Have you looked at the peer review proposals we've received? Now, one of the things I thought we might wish to discuss is for the engineering site plan peer review, we only had one respondent, which was Beals and Thomas. Beals and Thomas also responded to the environmental peer review proposal. And one of the things I'm wondering, looking for input on, is it more efficient if we have the same peer reviewer do both of those components? Because the site plan stuff kind of impinges on the environmental area too. So we'll discuss that. What are the Board's thoughts? Would you like me to phone a friend? Can't hear you. Can you unmute now, Catherine?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
All right, here we are.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. But now I don't remember exactly what I was going to say. So let me look back at my papers and someone else can go first.
Sarah, I was going to say that it seems to me that having Beals and Thomas do both of those peer reviews seems to make a lot of sense.
Okay.
I second it. And as much as we're under tight time constraints, if they can double dip and take care of everything, then I think at this point, it's a prudent thing to do.
I'm actually, I'm actually not sure whether it will. I mean, there's definitely some efficiencies to be gained by, you know, giving one firm both of the reviews. But it's also more work for one firm to handle. So there's a question of whether splitting up the work, you know, makes sense. And having two different perspectives makes sense. I don't, I'm not sure. I will say that I initially was inclined, you know, in my initial review, I was sort of, you know, leaning towards Beals and Thomas. But then when I looked at the materials submitted by Beta, I was really impressed with them. And I like, I think that their hours are more accurately estimated. It seems that the others with the lower fee structures, we're going to get a lot of add-on costs. I don't think it's, doesn't seem realistic to me. Not that I'm an expert on this. But, you know, this is a pretty big review. So I don't know. I am torn between Beals and Thomas and Beta, but I was really impressed with what Beta put out there with their models and with their sort of scope of review and scope of services.
I think Catherine makes some good points. The question is this, are we prepared to release Beals and Thomas on the other review? Can we do it all today? And then we're saving ourselves a couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah. The plan is to do, select peer reviewers for both today.
Okay.
Okay. And I think that, you know, I think that the rates are relatively the same for all the firms. And so if some of the firms underestimated the number of hours they would spend, if, I think probably the project may be more complex.
The price is more if they're underestimating the number of hours. Do they have the time to commit the number of hours required in the time required? Or they just are underestimating for purposes of marketing? I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think they would have submitted proposals for both if they didn't have workforce capacity to do both.
Yeah, these are two different disciplines. So two different areas of expertise within their office, I would think.
Hey, guys, can you hear me? It's John.
Yes. John.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was dialed in, but you guys couldn't hear me. So I tried another way.
Thanks.
Yeah, I disagree with what James just said, that, you know, I think that if they're bidding on the project, then they have the capacity to turn it around in the time that we need it. So with that said, I'm okay with the same firm doing both reviews.
Jim.
I'm fine with that.
Has Sean joined us?
Sean's trying to get on. He's out of town, but he's trying to get on. I've been texting.
Okay. Steve Gang, would you like to give us your viewpoint on this?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. This is Steve Gang from the Conservation Commission. I'm agreeing with much of what I've heard so far. As Catherine observed, because this complex project, it's likely that the hour, the estimate of hours from Beta is more accurate than the other two environmental proposals. And that ultimately, each of them is going to have to spend about the, I'm calculating 150 to 200 professional hours that are in the Beta proposal. So they're all three worthy proposals from our standpoint. I don't find any of them deficient. I don't think there's a bad choice here. I agree also with your argument that there's some economies to be gained by having the same firm do the civil engineering review, particularly because some of the elements of the project that are the most complicated, such as the earthwork and site preparation, are going to touch heavily on both of those areas, the engineering review and the environmental impact. And finally, I'll make a pitch here for the ZBA taking the initiative to make some requests for information from the developer as soon as humanly possible. The reason for that is because you are on a tight timeframe. And as these peer reviews unfold, invariably, they follow this pattern, which is the initial steps are review of the pertinent documents they've listed and a site visit. And then they prepare an interim report. And the bulk of that report is the specification of missing information, without which they don't think they can do an adequate peer review. Fortunately, because a bunch of us on the Conservation Commission side and some others, I think, have been paying attention all along, I think it's possible to anticipate many of those requests for information. And if you initiate them now, it will speed up the process. In other words, there won't be a lag from the time that interim report comes in to the time SLV is able to assemble the information that's required. The specific areas I've reviewed with the Conservation Commission and I've submitted in a memo to you, Sarah. So you have those. But I'll just mention that the subject of the site preparation, the amount of earthwork, blasting or drilling, removal, crushing, use on site, we don't know the magnitude of that, but it is important to know that. That has potentially large impacts on the environment. And obviously, also, it's an engineering/geotechnical challenge. And the same with the uncertainties about the onsite sewage treatment, particularly the location of leaching field or fields, how that's going to be constructed, cut and fill statistics for its preparation and finish, the conveyance of sewage to it, which is going to require crossing a wetland under the current plans. All of that is generally specified, but I don't think nearly enough detail for an adequate peer review. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. So does it make sense to other members of the Board that we request additional information from the applicant?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I agree. And I think we've already asked for some of this information as well. Yes.
Yeah, I think that we did ask for some. I think we asked for the test pit logs at our last meeting. I think that probably at this point, we need to make a formal request.
We have no test pit logs. The information that we have was included in the geotechnical analysis that we provided. Moreover, we did a lot of conservation work as part of our ANRAD, more than I typically ever do on any 40B project. And we're quite confident that we've given the Board enough information that their peer reviewers can go and do an adequate review. This is, a 40B is based on schematic plans. We're not, we're not doing a full geotechnical cut and fill analysis based on where we are in the process. If the zoning board wants to condition that as a condition to receiving a building permit, we would be fine with that. But we don't even know we're getting a permit here. So we're not going to be doing a full geotechnical analysis at this point in time. Moreover, we've done enough. Our plans are detailed enough that Beals and Thomas, who I know, is going to have enough to provide meaningful input to this Board. And I would ask Mr. Glenn or, you know, others to opine on what is required under 40B or Mr. Pucci. It's schematic plans, which is what we've done. Technically, a geotechnical analysis doesn't even need to be submitted. But we've done something here because we know it's of interest, you know, to the Board. We've done, we're under construction on a project in Winchester that Mr. Hill knows very well. He represented the Butters that tied us up in port for several years and ultimately lost. And on that project, where there was blasting and lots of site work and the like, we didn't do a full geotechnical analysis at any point during that project in Winchester, nor was it requested of us. So just to manage the Board's own expectations, we're not, we've submitted preliminary analysis, which we used, which was enough to develop our plans. It's at our risk if we're presenting something that can't be constructed. That's at our risk, not the towns. And that's our position relative to the information that we've submitted to date.
Mr. Glenn, do you have a thought on this?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, the applicant's, I mean, certainly correct that the bare minimum requirements are preliminary plans. The Board is correct that you have the right to ask for more information. You know, ideally, any concern you have, you have the right to ask about the applicant. And you should consult your town council on this as well. But the applicant's also correct that he can say, I won't provide certain things. In these situations, I usually encourage you to work with your peer reviewer to make sure that whatever you're asking for is required or something they need to see. I'm not a geotechnologist or I don't, I wouldn't pretend to know whether I could understand this with the test pit logs or without them. Usually, what will happen if there's information that a peer reviewer wants and the applicant doesn't have yet or won't provide, what we recommend is that the peer reviewer come up with some sort of proposed condition or modification to the plan to address their concern. You know, that's where it's often in the applicant's interest to provide information to help shape that condition or alleviate that concern. But if that information is not available, you can do that through conditions usually. You know, for example, if they haven't yet designed a certain part of the system and the peer reviewer or the town engineer or the Board has a concern about some aspect of the system, spec out what your concern is. We must see such and such. And sometimes that can be just spec it out. Sometimes it's give a performance standard. Sometimes it's a condition where something has to be reviewed later. Those are the worst ones because you really do want to have things as clear as possible. But it's great if all the information you need is available. Yeah, I would want to see what the peer reviewer said as well. I think it's great to try to move the process forward by asking for it now. I guess the next step would be see if the peer reviewer needs it. And if it's still not available, we ask the peer reviewer how they can advise the Board without the information. You still have to make a decision on some level. So George, you might want to jump in as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, George Pucci from Town Council's office. I actually, I really have nothing more than what Ezra described. I think that that describes the process exactly. The only thing I'd add is, you know, if there is some piece of information that a peer reviewer or one of your local department heads or someone commenting on the project from your, either the peer reviewers or your local input, ends up, you know, requesting information that's not provided, that they really need, that they need in order to give recommendations on whether you're going to approve or deny the project or how you would condition it appropriately. If it gets to that type of information, ultimately, you could possibly deny the project for lack of sufficient information. But you're not near that process yet. And you really do have to hear from your peer reviewer about what they think is, you know, the required information so that they can make meaningful recommendations to you.
Madam Chairman, and if I could just clarify what I'm saying, I'm not representing to the Board that we're done. We're not going to give you anything else. I mean, for instance, your traffic peer reviewer requested a lot of additional information. And we were providing all that. And that will be represented in the response letter that we're going to be submitting imminently. My, what I'm saying is we've given the Board enough for its peer-reviewed consultants to move forward, particularly on environmental. And let's see what they come back with. And if they come back with additional requests, I'm sure that we're going to be able to provide additional information. What I'm telling you, we're not going to provide a full geotechnical analysis at this point in the process. Let's see what Beals and Thomas has to say on both environmental and civil and site planning. And we'll be prepared to respond accordingly, just like we're going to do on traffic and parking.
Are you prepared to provide more detail with respect to the waivers you're requesting? My problem with the waivers you've requested is you haven't provided us with any supporting reasons for why you need the waivers.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we can do that. Typically, you know, first of all, our plan may be changing depending on what we hear from the peer review consultant. In which case, the waivers, to discuss waivers now is premature because we'd be discussing things that we might not even need. Where there may be changes that are required that necessitate a new waiver. So it's, in my experience, the waivers get discussed later on in the process once the plan is fully peer reviewed. And people generally feel comfortable that the footprint and the access and other things like that are not moving, which are typically what influences the waivers. However, if it knows something that the Board wants, we can provide at this date, you know, justification or rationale as to why certain waivers are necessary. So, you know, if that's something the Board is requesting, we can provide that. Understanding it's just, you know, preliminary in the process and that waiver list may end up changing.
Yeah, I guess my concern is the overall timeline, that the less information we have at the beginning, the longer this is going to take to resolve.
I think, Sarah, I think it's reasonable to request those waiver rationales now. And if they change throughout the process, then Mr. Engler can submit updated, you know, waiver requests for the ones that change. And that's fine. We all understand this is an evolving process. But the sooner we're able to really consider what's being asked, more thoroughly we'll be able to consider it. And I think that's important. So I think it's important to keep the waivers that are being requested of us top of mind and on the table throughout the process. And I recognize that they may change and be supplemented. The reasons may change and the waiver requests themselves may change, and that's fine. But we can at least know what's being asked as of now. And if it's amended or changed, that's my opinion.
I agree with Catherine. I think, Mr. Engler, you asked for the waivers. You must have some idea why you asked for them and what's the detail on why you asked for them. And if they change, they change. But what's, what our chairman has asked for is a perfectly reasonable question. And I think you're dodging it.
No, well, I'm looking at the waivers right now. What we'll do is we'll just add a column furthest to the right of the waivers that we submitted that provides, you know, rationale or explanation or whatever the column heading will be on why that waiver was requested or necessary.
That sounds great.
Thank you. James, do you have any more to say on this?
Yeah, I think some of waivers has been covered completely. And I agree with the request of the applicant to provide additional detail on that. I also understand this is a process and it's subject to change over time. I don't really have anything additional to offer.
John.
Yeah, I, yeah, I brought up the topic of the geotech during our first meeting. And, you know, at the time, we didn't receive any pushback. So in my mind, I thought that it was going to be processed. And so, you know, the geotech is important because, you know, it's important to how the buildings get situated, et cetera. So with that said, you know, if we want to proceed without the geotech, you know, I'm guessing that the peer reviewer is going to have a long list of items anyway in his, in their first draft of their report. So when that time comes and we can just address those items, then.
Okay. Brian.
I agree with everything. I think Catherine was well articulated. I think we were in the applicant's best interest trying to get as much information upfront to try to expedite the entire situation. If he's not, I'm not willing to provide the information that's requested, it's just going to be a long drawn-out process. And as John says, we'll just have to wait until the peer reviewers ask the questions. And then Mr. Engler can decide whether or not he still wants to hold back that information being requested. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask these questions. And, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more, just a little more reasoned excuses or reason why he doesn't want to provide the information. But yeah, I think that we just take it one step at a time.
Okay. Mr. Gang.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Two things. One is from the ConCom perspective, we're in agreement with most of the Board's opinions here about the waivers. The more specific and clearer they can be about what impact failure to waive specific provisions of the Wetlands Bylaw, what impact that would have on the construction plans or timing or expense, that specificity will be really valuable. I think, in fact, indispensable in you discharging your duty to weigh the impact to environment and health and safety versus the need for affordable housing. The second point I wanted to make is that I had the pleasure of attending the Hamilton Planning Board meeting last night, which is considering what I regard as a miniature version of this project. 30 to 50 luxury senior condominiums built on a granite knoll, which will have to be blasted considerably. And a lot of retention structures built to hold the grades in order to do the, to prepare the site. And it is surrounded by various wetland resources and watersheds. And at the request of the planning board, the applicant came prepared with specifics about exactly how many cubic yards of material would need to be removed by blasting or drilling, brought a professional drilling contractor to specify how many blast occurrences and blast days would be required to do that. And then also gave a good faith estimate of how much of the material that is dislodged can be used on site and how much will have to be trucked away. And the specificity that they got from that in terms of how many days of blasting, how much dust would be generated, how much potential for other kinds of disturbance, was, I think, invaluable, probably indispensable for doing the work of understanding the environmental impact. So whether that falls under peer review technically or whether that's something you might ask for in the course of the other work that you do, I would submit it's extremely important and not an unusual request. You're not asking for finished architectural drawings and whatnot. You're asking for a good faith estimate of an extremely important parameter of the construction sequence.
Thank you, Mr. Gang.
I would like to add this. Just because it's such a challenging site, you know, like all this stuff that we're talking about, it's extremely important. You know, we're not talking about just a cleared plot of land here, you know? And so I think that's why this is all important and necessary. So I'll just add that.
Thank you, John. Mr. Hill.
Hi, thank you. For the record, Dan Hill, I represent the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. If I could just be heard briefly on this narrow issue. Mr. Engler states that there's no test pit logs. And even if there were any, it sounds like he would not be willing to share them. And I
That's not true. That's not true. I did say if we had them, we'd share them. We don't, we didn't need to do them, yeah.
Okay, so I find it hard to believe that there's not test pit data because there are test pits on the property. They're shown on the site plans. Some limited data was provided in the geotechnical report. It's just not complete in that you don't have the groundwater elevation data. You don't have the soil lithology data that you commonly see when test pit data logs are provided as part of applications. So these are critical. So these, these are critical pieces of information that every peer review engineer is going to ask for, including wetland scientists, peer review scientists, because it goes to multiple issues that are raised in this project, and it is directly relevant to the waivers. This board steps into the shoes of every other local board in Manchester for purposes of this, of this project, and one of the bylaws that you review is the Water Resource Protection District Bylaw, section 4.9, this project site is within the zone three of your Water Resource Protection District, and this project would require a special permit under that bylaw. So this, these, these type, knowing where, what the soils are, knowing where the groundwater is, that is essential data for evaluating any project, whether it's 40B or not, that comes before any board with respect to the Water Resource Protection District. The applicant's also asking for waivers from the Wetland Protection Bylaw and Regulations. This data that we're talking about is directly relevant to whether, to evaluating the impacts that the wastewater system and the stormwater systems will have on the surrounding wetland resources, you have, you have the Sawmill Brook, you have the bordering vegetated wetlands, and you have vernal pools, all within close proximity to these recharge systems. So, so this information is relevant. If, if the information truly doesn't exist, then what the board should be asking for is, is test pits done on the property in specific locations with monitoring wells installed, so we can collect data about groundwater levels in the spring of 2022, when that data is, is particularly helpful. So I'll leave it at that, but I, I, I would strongly recommend and emphasize the need for that, for that information to be provided. You're going to get that request from Beals and Thomas, and you might as well just have that information provided to you now, so we can all start looking at it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Sarah, I will add that I've never seen an, an environmental peer review that, that did not request that information. You know, in my, in my career, I've probably read, you know, through 60 or 70 of these things, 70 of these things, and, you know, when applicable, that, that data's been requested, if it hasn't been provided upfront. So I agree with everything that Mr. Hill just said. Thank you.
Mr. Gang, could, could you explain when the Conservation Commission was looking at the ORAD, if I have that right, what, what SLV asked for with respect to test pits in the, on the site?
Sure, let me try, it's a little complicated, and forgive all the, all the nomenclature, it's, it's CONCOM inside baseball kind of talk, which some of you will be familiar with and others not, but the test pits were done under what's called an RDA, which is the kind of light, lightest weight permission, application and permission the CONCOM gives. It essentially says that we don't see any risk of serious impact to protected resources or buffer zones, and therefore the work can go ahead. And I believe two rounds of test, test pits were done under probably the same RDA sometime in late 2019 and early 2020. And on site visits, you know, we observed that the test pits had been refilled, and in some cases, covered with hay or some other kind of erosion prevention. So I know the work was done, and I assume they were done to best practices, there's no reason to dig it, drive your machinery up there and dig a test pit and not pick up things like groundwater elevations and, and soil characteristics, depth to ledge, et cetera. So whether we call them test pit logs or not, the CONCOM also expected to see somewhat more data from those efforts. Subsequent to that, SLV filed what's called an ANRAD, which is a request to delineate the boundaries, the identity and the boundaries of wetland resources on the property, and as most of you know, there are a number of different wetland resources, and they're relatively complicated. So we spent a good deal of time examining things like isolated vegetated wetlands, which come under special provisions, they're not as obvious as riverfront or regular bordering vegetated wetland, and also vernal pools. Eventually, we hired a peer reviewer with SLV's agreement, Mike DeRosa, who did a very extensive piece of work, including focus on the vernal pools during the, the, at least part of the breeding season in 2021, and delivered a number of really thorough reports. And based on all of that, we issued a decision, which is called an ORAD. And that sets, at least for the purposes of the State Act, the boundaries of the various wetland resources, the stream, the marshes, the freshwater marshes, the vernal pools. And as it turned out, we excluded the isolated vegetated wetland, not sufficiently size, not, not of sufficient size or soil characteristics to qualify. So all of that is now a matter of public record, I believe DEP has reviewed that ORAD without, without exception, and obviously that'll be a starting point for the peer reviewers, and they'll need to review some of that documentation that we filed with the ORAD, and perhaps the application on the peer review as well. Does that help? You have other questions?
Yeah, could you also explain what level of review will be occurring in the future through the CONCOM regarding the state regulations? What aspects will you be looking at?
Sure.
But a state regulated?
That's a very good point, Madam Chair. The, the CONCOM administers both the Manchester General Wetlands Bylaw and the State Wetlands Protection Act. In the case of the bylaw, obviously, that's where the waivers are in front of you now, and if you grant some or all of those waivers, there'll be no need for any permits under those provisions. But there's still a need for a permit from the CONCOM under the State Wetlands Protection Act, which is kind of the grandmother of all the state environmental rules, and it's provides, keeps lots of conservation commissioners very busy as volunteers and up at night, et cetera. The standards are not identical. In fact, the reason we have a, a local general wetlands bylaw is because under home rule, towns and cities are allowed to vary, and in some cases, increase the protection that they give to different resources. And this is pertinent because Manchester has opted as of decades ago to increase the protection of vernal pools considerably beyond what the state Wetlands Protection Act affords. Essentially, the Wetlands Protection Act recognizes the valuable habitat surrounding, usually upland from a vernal pool, that's where all the critters who use the vernal pool once a year for that magic big night, that's where they live the rest of the year. And these are not little tiny salamanders, these things are, they're hard to see, they're nocturnal and live underground much of the time, but they can be six to eight to 10 inches in length. So they're, and they can live 25 years, and they're, they're incredibly loyal to specific locations, and that, that's all behind, that's the reasoning, I think, behind the expanded protection that Manchester gave to vernal pools. The fact that there are a number of identified vernal pools, one certified, I believe, and the others may be certified in the course of time here by the state, that creates a dramatic difference between what the CONCOM would do applying a local bylaw if it's not waived, and applying the state's Wetland Protection Act. Having said that, the Wetland Protection Act still affords essentially the same kind of protection to riverfront, so the boundary around Sawmill Brook, and also to bordering vegetated wetland. The definition of buffer zones is different, town has stricter ones, but now I fear I'm getting into a lecture on the town wetlands bylaws, so I should just shut up. Thank you for a good question.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Legere, yes.
Mr. Pucci, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Yes, I just want to note in, in follow-up to that excellent recitation of, you know, what to expect from Conservation Commission, whether or not you waive the local regulations of a local bylaw provisions, if you, if you do not waive it, you will essentially be waiving it because the Conservation Commission won't get to have some type of enforceable conditions relating to local regulations. So to the extent that you're not going to grant a blanket waiver, which I doubt you will, because typically you don't grant that type of waiver, you, you're going to stand in the shoes of the Conservation Commission with regard to conditions under the local regulations. So it's important that you understand that, so that conservation is giving you the recommendations of how they would condition the project, or even deny it under the local regulations, and then, then you would have to exercise your jurisdiction over that to determine whether, you know, there are valid local concerns that warrant and compel the application of certain local wetland regulations to this project, and then you would have that in your comprehensive permit decision, either denial or a approval with conditions. So do you see what I'm saying? So it will, even if you did not intend to waive them, you will effectively waive them if you don't hear that and have that as part of your process, the local regulation. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you, you understand that dichotomy, your, your permit will be subject to state requirements, so that's Conservation Commission, they'll, they'll act under the State Act, and, and that's totally their process. But whatever you want to impose or not impose under the local regulations or consideration of any waivers, you, you definitely want full input from the Conservation Commission or at least a peer reviewer on those issues, so that you're making sure that you're applying any local regulations of local concern that need to be applied to the project.
So we can go above and beyond what a peer reviewer might suggest if the CONCOM suggests something?
Correct.
Strange and condition.
If that's reasonable, and, and you're treating this affordable housing project equally of the way the Conservation Commission would treat other non-40B projects. So you can't impose, you know, something that wouldn't be imposed on a non-40B project, but that, that's going to be for you to, to decide.
Madam Chair, if I may, just, and I'm sure your counsel will advise you, but it's not, this is a 40B, so it is treated differently than a quote-unquote "normal" project, and case law indicates that your threshold for a local concern overriding the need for affordable housing because Manchester is under 10% is very, very high. So if the board just simply said, I mean, the whole purpose, or one of the purposes of 40B is local municipalities had such restrictive local bylaws, it was impossible to build housing, so the state came in and said, you have to adhere to state requirements, but you, you can waive local requirements. So if the town, and I'm not saying this is arbitrary, but if the town said, well, you know, these local bylaws are really important, so we're going to make the, the applicant adhere to all these, and we appeal, all right, and we show we can't build the project, the burden shifts to the town, and you have to show that you're, that adherence to these local bylaws outweighs the need for affordable housing, and that bar is exceptionally high, and you can defer to Mr. Pucci on how, how successful towns have been at the HAC defending similar positions, not very successful. I mean, I think the HAC's record relative to whether it sides with developers or whether it sides with towns, it's a matter of record, you can research it. So we feel like there's nothing in this project that does not comply with any state regulation, and I think that will be borne out, but we are going to need some waivers from local bylaws in order to build the plan, and, and in fact, unlike other projects, for the most part, this is a zero sum, in that it's not like, well, you, it's, we can't build the project without it, it's not, well, you could do half the size, or you could, no, most of these, in, in our rationale are going to be, yeah, we can't build the project. So I think it's important to understand it, 40B has set up their very clear regulations, and the case law is clear, and this board is expected to operate within the, the regulations and the case law. So it's just important that you understand, you can't just arbitrarily say, oh, well, we think this local, you know, concern is really important, I mean, you can say that, but the board should be aware of, you know, what that may mean, you know, downstream, that, that's the only point I want to make on this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Legere?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Luke Legere on behalf of the Citizens Initiative for Manchester Affordable Housing. I just want to echo the comments that you've heard from Mr. Hill and others about the importance of information on soil, groundwater, ledge, that could be obtained through test pits and monitoring wells, and I just wanted to offer one other reason in favor of requesting that from the applicant. Now, as we just heard from Mr. Gang, the applicant will need to go before the Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act, filing a notice of intent seeking an order of conditions. I would certainly expect that this information will be required by the Conservation Commission as part of its review. So you're not really asking the applicant here for anything that they're not going to ultimately have to produce, and if I remember correctly, when we heard from the applicant's wetland consultant, I think maybe the first night of hearing, there was a comment that a notice of intent was coming, I think, you know, relatively soon was the impression I had anyways. So I, I apologize if I'm stating the obvious here, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but I think that's just another thing to keep in mind, you're not asking for something that they're not otherwise going to have to produce relatively soon anyhow.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Raise your hand. I will go back to the board.
Also, Madam Chair, and I, and I asked for this before, and I'm not sure why it's not happening, can I see the proposals from the peer review consultants? I mean, as I'm, as I'm writing the checks, that is, that is required under 40B, and I haven't seen anything from anybody, and that happened before with the traffic peer reviewers, and I requested it, but I, I've not seen a proposal from Beals and Thomas. So, you know, through the chair, I would ask either Ezra or Sue to forward me as such.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, go, going back to the board. So are we in agreement? We're in agreement that we wanted the additional rationale for the waivers being requested, correct?
Yes.
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 What about asking for test pit information? It may be seasonal, that's a piece I don't know, whether it's seasonal, something to be done in the spring.
I think we should, well, I, I don't know about asking, it sounds like a lot of people believe that this test pit information will be required to be considered, so I don't have an opinion at this moment on whether we, we are going, we should ask them to affirmatively do something new, but I would ask for whatever information exists around the test pits that were already authorized and created, and then, and then uncreated, whatever, so I would ask for whatever information exists from that process that already happened. That should be an easy enough ask. Now, whether we go beyond that, I don't know, but I think that is the bare minimum of what we should ask for right now.
Okay.
I think it's our responsibility to ask for it.
I mean, that, that's all a matter of record, but for convenience to the board, and I know Sue, who's responsible for disseminating, we will make sure that all the information that was submitted to the Conservation Commission is submitted to the board as part of these proceedings, and we can do that immediately.
Okay, I thought that was happening after our last meeting.
I'm not sure, are we asking for all the information submitted to the Conservation Commission, or are we asking for the backup, like whatever exists behind the information that was submitted to CONCOM?
Right, right, I mean, we're giving you that. we're giving you that too. So but some of the things that Mr. Hill has requested, we don't have and have not been done. And we're not doing that imminently. And the NOI is not happening until we're further through this con uh, we're not going to file a notice of intent for a project that not is not approved. We're just not going to do it, and we have a long way to go before we know where the board's going to act on this. So yes, Mr. Legere is correct in that ultimately we will need to provide this to the Conservation Commission. But we're not provide, we don't need to provide it now under forty B. And let's wait, let's wait and see what Beals and Thomas says based on all the information that we have submitted. So that that's that's the applicant's position at this point in time.
If I could, Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Ezra.
I I would suggest, I mean, it sounds to me like you've essentially asked the applicant for this stuff already. If you want to formalize that with a vote, you can do that as well. That doesn't mean you're going to get it. The applicant might say, here's what I'll give you, and here's what I don't have, and here's what I'm not giving. But you might as well ask. It doesn't stop the process or anything, and you know, and then I think what we what's more important is as soon as possible, bring the peer reviewer on and then Sue and I can work with them and say, look, it might take three to five weeks to review everything, but in the first week, let's get the information request to the applicant for anything else. You know, and then we're not, and and the the main issue here is we don't want to run out of time and say, we can't make a decision because we haven't seen something. And the applicant says, oh, you never asked me, or, you know, I won't give it. You know, if if right now we've said we want this, and then two weeks later, the peer reviewer says, I need that. The applicant is essentially wasted two weeks is what happens. And if we get to the end and you're not ready to make a decision, you've built a record, at least on some level, that it's the applicant who dragged feet, not you. You know, that's a lot of what this is about, and I and I don't think we're going to get there. I'm hoping as soon as we get a peer reviewer on board, they talk to each other, they they talk in engineering language, they know exactly what they need, and this can move quickly. Um, really, I think to me, that that's that's, I think, the easiest process. But but if it helps to say on record, you've asked for all this stuff, you know, George might might like to have that in the record in case later on someone needs to say you asked.
Um, Mr. Pucci, do you have an opinion on that?
Yes, I think it would be helpful to to do to put that out there. Like I said, ultimately, you're going to get the recommendation. And you what you don't want to end up is being in a situation where you deny something for lack of sufficient information. But it's not a big enough ticket item. In other words, there's subtleties involved, that there's a argument that you didn't really need it. And then you end up having the Housing Appeals Committee be your permitting authority. You don't want to have that happen. But if it ends up that there's a compelling piece of information that you've requested early on and was never provided, and the peer reviewer can't give you meaningful um, input as to whether to deny or condition the project, then yeah, it it's helpful to have a record of that um, in the event of appeal.
So back to the board, we need to select the peer reviewer. And we need to make a determination regarding whether we want to um, whether we want to um, ask for the list of items that we feel is necessary now in order to create the record. And Gail, for your information, Sean San is on the call. He's just not able to unmute himself, so he is participating.
Eric, you ask for a vote with respect to this request?
Yes. I'll take a motion.
Um, I move that the zoning board of appeals requests from the applicant um, all data and information related to the test pits previously constructed at the site, um, data, information and analysis, background information, as well as the final reports that were submitted to CONCOM.
I second.
Brian seconds. So related to test pits and backup info. Any discussion? Um, I will take. A roll call vote. Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sarah votes yes, and Sean voted yes via text since he can't unmute himself. Now we get to the selection of the peer reviewer. Um. Do I have a motion on that?
Uh, before, Sarah, I wanted to note, one of the comments on the analysis we got from CONCOM was that none of the proposals mentioned in an analysis of watershed or drinking supply. So whoever we select, I want to make sure the scope of work does include that analysis because I think those are important considerations for us.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Hill, did you have something to say?
Would it be possible to um, to tell us who who the proposals are coming from? Because I I haven't, we haven't seen any proposals. I don't think they're posted on the website.
The for the environmental, the proposals came from Beals and Thomas, Beta and BSC. For the engineering and site plan, the proposal, the sole proposal came from Beals and Thomas. Okay. Um. So do I have a motion?
Uh, I got a question for Sue. Uh, as far as the environmental goes, have they all met the criteria as far as when they could turn it over, when they could uh, make their initial report?
Yes, and they were all, they were, they were similar.
Okay.
Uh, Sarah, I'd be inclined to go with uh, Beals and Thomas, just so that, you know, they can uh, share information and and hopefully, you know, streamline these reports for us.
And I assume that we would want a commitment from them that they can devote additional hours if it is determined that the project, the scope of the project, project is greater than they originally assumed.
I believe that the RFP said, you know, an hourly rate as well. You know, and I think that's right.
I'm just talking about capacity. Making sure they have the capacity.
To do it within the deadline. Like, of course, they could ask for more time, but we really need it soon, so.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, um, BSC did say a turnaround time of one to two weeks on the initial, and the others both had three to four, three to five.
Thank you, Sue. So do I have a motion?
Uh, I have one question for Sue. Again, I'm looking at the your spreadsheet. Thank you very much, by the way. Uh.
Well, that was from uh, CONCOM.
Oh, sorry, Sue, but hey. Take it while, okay? Uh, so we got stormwater management being excluded by both Beta and BSC. Does Beals and uh, will Beals and Thomas include stormwater management? Maybe that's from Mr. Gang.
I think we have to make sure that they do.
I I mean, any civil, any civil peer review proposal is going to do stormwater management.
I'm just, I'm just.
And as the, as the RFP was written, it's basically they're they're committing to review whatever we give them to review. You know, it's, you know, and that's really whatever the applicant provides or you ask the applicant for. So you know.
My team's here. I'm good with Beals and Thomas for both, just as John was.
And and just for the record, I thought all three firms were very good, um, in their in their responses and um, in their sample reports. You know, I'm I'm confident that all three firms would do a great job. I just, you know, for me, I I like the idea of 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 having the same firm do both. That way they can share information uh, and and create some synergies there. Thanks.
Um, I have one more member of the public that raised their hand. I'll take this person, and then I'm cutting off the the public input. Um, Sarah Pierce. Sarah Pierce, did you want to be heard? You have your hand up.
She's muted.
Hold on, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just said as a resident, I think it would be helpful if Jeff Engler acted more as an applicant than an advisor.
Thank you for your input.
Yep.
Okay, um. So I make a motion that we approve Beals and Thomas as a peer reviewer for environmental, um, civil engineering and site plan.
Second.
Brian seconded it. Any discussion? Okay. Um, I'll take a roll call vote. Brian.
Yes.
John.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
Jim.
Approved.
James.
Approved.
Sean. Says just via text. Sarah approves. Um. Okay, so, um, I put this in the hands of Sue and Ezra to contact Beals and Thomas and to let us know what the response is. And we will put together the official request for um, the items we need from the applicant.
There is there any vote needed to formally request the peer review funds from the applicant? Or has that already been done? Or not local precedent?
Um, we didn't feel we needed a vote of the board to request the funds.
Great, sounds like we're all.
We felt that um, by approving the peer reviewer. Unless Mr. Pucci feels otherwise.
No, I I I think it's fine the way you're proceeding, but you do want to make sure that um, you know, the applicant had requested the proposal. I'd make sure you get those funds on deposit before you have them undertake their review.
Okay. So last time we needed an invoice.
And Madam Chair, um, uh, as far as Mr. Engle's request for copies of the uh, other uh, proposals, when can, when can you expect to see them?
Already gotten them.
Those have, those have been sent.
Oh.
Thank you.
They were multi-grabbing.
It's because I wasn't doing it.
Well, that was good.
And and the request for funds, uh, my math shows twenty nine thousand. So eleven five for um, environmental and seventeen five for for geo, for engineering sites and geotext.
Guys, we're good.
Um. Now, the other thing I wanted to mention is um, correspondence. Um, we received a letter from the fire chief with respect to the second egress issue for public safety that has been posted to our forty B website. I will share that with the board. Um, I've also requested uh, the police chief to provide us with um, his requirements with respect to safety and the sidewalk. Um, we've received letters from Attorney Hill on behalf of the MECT. Um, one from October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one included um, reports from consultants, Scott Porshi and John Chesia. I'm botching the names. Uh, the first one was water resources consultant, the second was a civil engineering consultant. Then on January twenty first, twenty twenty two, we received a letter that included a review by David Black as a transportation engineer. Um, so the the process we will use is that the board will look at those reports and will compare them to the peer reviews that we receive um, and and discuss it if there's any difference. That we don't feel that it's appropriate for our peer reviewer to review peer reviews submitted by third parties. So, okay.
What is, Madam Chair, we expect to have our response uh, to to EP's um, traffic request uh, no later than Friday. But that should, that should give them plenty of time to review and and be prepared um, on uh, what is it, February ninth?
Yes.
Our our traffic engineer will also be attending that meeting and available for comment and 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 to answer questions as well.
Agreed. Okay, um. The next meeting um, will be held on Wednesday, February ninth. Um, and be restricted to discussion on traffic and public safety with public comment. Um, and hopefully we can work through um, a lot of those issues and kind of come to a conclusion on that. So I will continue the public hearing and then we'll go on to administrative matters. Um, so I move to continue the public hearing to Wednesday, February ninth at seven o'clock PM.
And Madam Chair, was that also going to include discussion of um, architecture peer review?
On this ninth, are we going to have that in time?
Yes.
Yes. So we'll also discuss the architect peer review.
Thank.
Thank you. Um.
I have a question for Ms. Brown.
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
So when you get these uh, reviews, I haven't been receiving them. Are you only sending them to members and not alternates?
Um, I send them to, I I have not been sending them to the board. I've been sending them to Sarah for distribution.
No, I think you distributed the environmental ones. I asked you to.
What, because, yeah, because you asked me to. I'm happy to send them to the full board, to whatever group that that Sarah would like me to when they first come in, if if that's, if that's how, if I should be the distributor, I'm happy to do that.
Or perhaps you could send them to Gail Hunter and have her distribute them to the board. Because she'll have all the emails.
I I will do that.
Yeah, okay. Um. So we will move on to administrative matters. We have.
Did you vote on that, Sarah, on the continuance to the ninth?
No.
No, we did not.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, may I ask a brief question before you continue?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, Luke Legere again, just sort of logistical or administrative questions. Um, looking ahead to the next hearing where there will be an opportunity for public comment, we've heard a few um, comments.
we've heard a few comments today about, you know, materials not being shared or available. You referenced a moment ago some letters that had been submitted by consultants or attorneys representing members of the public. Will those materials be made available on the town's website? I know there's a repository of documents there, but I don't believe those materials have made their way onto the site yet. And I'm just thinking that to allow for a robust and complete public comment period, it would really be beneficial, I think, for everyone to have an opportunity to see those materials. So I guess my, I would request that they be put there, and if, if not, if you could just maybe direct the public to the appropriate person to be in touch with to make sure we have any recent submissions?
We will add those to the website, I'll request that tomorrow.
Okay.
I apologize, I did get behind them.
No, that, that's fine, Madam Chair, I just, I just wanted to clarify. And, and one other request, while, while I've got the mic here, if I may, if I understood you correctly, Madam Chair, you had indicated that you're not going to be sharing reports and memos and comment letters directly with your peer review consultants, but you'll review them and post questions as appropriate. I guess my question is, you know, the last, at the last hearing where your peer review consultant on traffic was present and presenting, the public didn't have an opportunity to comment. And I do think it would have been beneficial had Mr. Lucas had the opportunity to hear some questions that members of the public had. So if you're not going to be sharing those comment letters and memos directly with the peer review consultants, will there be an opportunity moving forward to, for the public to participate when your peer review consultants are participating?
Yes, the reason I didn't take public comment at the prior peer review is because we had not had an opportunity to review the reports, the peer reviewer had not really had an opportunity. And I felt it was premature to get into a conversation on traffic and public safety. So it made more sense to do it once we had the final report.
Thank you.
Because we just, we didn't, it was very confusing for us.
Thank you very much.
But we do expect, I do expect to take public input as much as I can. It's just, we're being hit with so much information from so many different people on so many different things that until we have something from our peer reviewer that we feel is, you know, more or less final, it's just a little overwhelming for us, but, okay, that's.
Understood, thanks, I just wanted to understand how we were going to be proceeding moving forward, that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, anything we get in writing from people that we can share with the board in advance of a meeting is most helpful. And put on the website. Okay, so I'm going to try again. I'm going to move to continue the public hearing on the 40B application to Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM to deal with traffic and public safety with public comment and to select the architect peer reviewer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Catherine seconds. I will take a roll call vote. Brian?
Approved.
John?
Yes, approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Sarah approves, and Sean approved via text. I will now move on to administrative matters. We have the minutes from December 8th, 2021.
And I'll, I'll say goodnight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do people have an opportunity to review those minutes?
I did not, Sarah.
Did anybody else?
I did not either, Sarah.
Okay.
Didn't have a chance either.
Then we will approve those at the next meeting on February 9. Is there anything else on the administrative side that people wanted to raise?
Nope.
Sean wanted to raise something.
Who, me? No, I said no.
No, Sean, okay. Well, I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I will take a roll call vote. Brian?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jim?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Sean approves and Sarah approves. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, thank you.
Goodnight.